This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening. Welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Public Meeting for Tuesday, January 21st. This meeting is called to order. Each school year, the school board has a public board meeting in each of the four schools. We call it our road trip. This is the last of the four schools we're visiting. We tend to visit Twelve Corners Middle School in January. And I will note, as we get going and before I hand it over to Dr. McGowan, on behalf of the entire school board, we're incredibly grateful for the leadership shown in this school, particularly by Dr. Edmonds and her entire team, for what they've had to work through and process, always focusing on supporting kids, families, and staff. And as noted, as a board, we are incredibly grateful for the leadership Dr. Edmonds and her entire team have shown. Also, as again, with Dr. McGowan and his team, the entire district has really shown up in a way to support people in need and just sort of be there for people. And it makes you feel very grateful to serve all of these folks. And the board continues to be proud of who we are and the people we represent. So, thank you for that. With that, our favorite way to start a meeting is with the Brighton Believer Awards. And so, I will turn it over to Dr. McGowan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Davis. As we have explained to people before, the Brighton Believers Council selects nominees to receive Brighton Believers Awards for demonstrating the Brighton Believers' character traits of integrity, respect, responsibility, kindness, and self-control. Tonight is no exception. These award winners are students, teachers, staff members, parents, coaches, and community members. The nomination form is available on the website, dcsd.org/ believers. Please nominate friends, neighbors, students who are doing great things. What a great way to start our meeting and recognize the great contributions of many people in our community. The first nominee to be recognized tonight, I'd ask Dan Pascal to come on up, along with Lou Alamo and Ashley Edwards, Assistant Principal here at TCMS. And Neil Lorgan. Neil, I didn't see you standing back there. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to leave you out. Dan Pascal, a TCMS Cleaner, was nominated by Principal Dr. Danielle Edmonds and Custodian Neil Lorgan. "We are honored to nominate Dan Pascal," she writes, "for the Brighton Believers Award." His quick thinking, calm demeanor, and decisive actions have consistently demonstrated his commitment to the safety and well-being of our TCMS students and staff. Recently, a student accidentally put a cup of instant macaroni and cheese in the microwave without adding water, causing it to catch fire. This is a TCMS calamity right here. The student, in a panic, threw the burning cup into the compost bin, which ignited the bag inside. Dan quickly assessed the situation, remained calm. I feel like I was one of these guys for sure. Remained calm and acted immediately to put the fire out. Without hesitation, he then grabbed a wet floor sign and fanned the smoke away from the smoke detector, which, all kidding aside, meant that everybody did not have to leave the building in that moment, which would have happened. And although I read it dramatically, it could have had really terrible consequences, and Dan really moved fast to help everyone. Thanks to Dan's swift actions, the fire alarm did not go off, and we were able to avoid evacuating the entire building. This incident is just one example of Dan's excellent judgment and quick thinking. Last year, a student began choking on his lunch and started to turn purple. Dan, without hesitation, performed the Heimlich maneuver, saving the student's life. That's amazing. A few years ago, Dan also intervened to break up a fight between students during lunch, preventing a student from sustaining serious injury. Dan's contributions extend beyond these critical moments. Since joining the day crew, his impact has been felt by many. Numerous members of the TCMS staff have commented about Dan's invaluable presence, particularly around the sense of calm and reliability that he brings to work each day. Dan Pascal exemplifies what it means to be a Brighton Believer. His quick thinking, commitment to safety, and dedication to our school community make him truly deserving of this recognition. Dan, thank you so much for all that you do for our students, staff, and everybody in the school community. Congratulations. First, and perhaps most importantly, despite their vigorous lobbying and dedication to the cause, boys, we've decided there will be school tomorrow. They tried. They tried very hard. Everybody in the meeting should know that was their first priority tonight, but there will be school tomorrow. So, I'd like to ask Jackson Bonanno, Mason Chiron, Will Sullivan, Kellen Sweeney, Charlie Weld, and Grayson Zestarni to come on up, please. These incre- oh, Ashley Edwards, if you could come on up too. There you go. Come on up, please. Dr. Edmonds, by the way, is getting the orientation kicked off downstairs. She will be up shortly as well. Coop, you want to come up? Cooper, come on. Guys, all set? All right. These fantastic TCMS students were nominated by classmate Cooper de Blais. Love saying Cooper de Blais. Principal Dr. Danielle Edmonds and Assistant Principal Ashley Edwards. Dr. Edmonds and Mrs. Edwards wrote, "We are honored and proud to recommend a group of remarkable seventh grade boys for the Brighton Believers Award. These boys, together and individually, demonstrated exceptional maturity, responsibility, kindness, and integrity when a friend was in need. Recently, while playing football after school, a friend suffered a notable injury. Recognizing the severity of the situation, these boys immediately sprang into action, each contributing thoughtfully and decisively to ensure their friend's well-being. One student took the lead and called 911, relaying crucial information about the injury, location, and their friend's status with a level of poise that prompted the dispatcher to comment on his maturity, clarity, and ability to stay calm. Meanwhile, two other students ran back to the building to seek adult help, demonstrating both urgency and composure in their actions. Still, other students sat with the boy, holding his hand and keeping him calm despite all of his pain. The boy showed an unwavering commitment to their friend, putting his needs first in a time of distress. Even after he was transported to the hospital, they continued to support one another, handling the emotional weight of the event with resilience and compassion. These students embody the core values we strive to cultivate here at Brighton, and their selfless actions serve as a model for the entire school community. We wholeheartedly recommend them for the Brighton Believers Award to honor and celebrate their kindness, integrity, leadership, and commitment to their friend and one another." Cooper de Blais wrote, "I just wanted to talk about how awesome my friends were when I broke my leg. Charlie called 911 right away and told me they will be here soon. He acted so quickly and was so worried. Will sat with me, holding my hand and saying things like, 'You're okay. You've got this. Hang in there,' and he was comforting me to make me feel better. The three of us were really supportive of each other. Jackson and Mason ran into the school to get help right away, which is so kind and helped me out so much because I felt comfortable when you guys came right out. Then Grayson and Kellen ran to the street to direct the ambulance to the field. I'm so grateful to all of them." Oh, thank you. Something very nice of me. I won't say it, but. "He told me to stay strong. You'll get through this, and you're the best. That made me feel special. Dr. Edmonds made me feel so comfortable because she ran right over and sat down and started making me laugh, trying to get me to take my mind off of my leg, which helped me so much. She made me laugh because she said that your mom is going to run the fastest she will ever run," and she did. Like you would not believe. Thank you to all of the other people that came right over, even though I didn't know all of them. I loved how everyone acted so quickly for me and made me feel awesome. You are all the best. I will tell you, Cooper, one, you were brave in a really difficult moment. But these friends right here, we should all be so lucky to have these kind of people by our side. Frankly, they directed the adults. A lot of us were out there. I know Mr. Alamo was out there too. Dr. Malloy, who's not here, was out there. And we really stood back and watched you direct traffic, all of you, and make sure that your friend was taken care of. For the adults here, most of you are their parents, and you know this pretty well, but this was a pretty scary injury. Cooper was tough and brave, and that was pretty amazing. But his friends made sure that that happened and took care of it in really what was a scary moment and a pretty bad injury. So, we should all be so lucky to have you guys standing by our side. Thank you for being an example to everyone else in our school community. Congratulations. I'm going to ask you each to come up one at a time when I say your name. Jackson Bonanno. Mr. McGowan, we'll take a picture of everybody all at the end. Okay? Does that work? Mason. Will. Kellen. Charlie. And last but not least, Grayson.
I will, I will quickly note, thank you all for being here. We're about to do a discussion with regards to capital improvements to the middle school, and then we're going to have a budget discussion.
The boys wanted to stay, Mr. Davis.
So, if you'd like to take a minute right now to help people do homework and things like that, we're happy to take a couple-minute break to allow people to get to other activities.
Thank you, guys.
And as is the case with all public meetings, we allow the opportunity for public participation. Is there anyone here tonight who has a question or a comment for the school board? Seeing none, we'll move on with the meeting. Next up is the approval of tonight's agenda. You all have had a chance to review it. Any questions, comments, or edits to the agenda? Motion to approve? Moved by Eleanor, seconded by Carrie Lynn. All those in favor? Don't seem so far away. You've also had the chance to receive the minutes from the January 7th meeting. Any questions, comments, or edits to those minutes? Motion to approve? Moved by Karen. Seconded by Sue. All those in favor? We are in TCMS, as noted at the beginning of the meeting, so we do have a chance to get an update with regards to the TCMS Facilities Improvement Plan, and that'll be led by Lou Alamo, I think, with help from a couple of others, maybe. So, I will invite Lou on up.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry. Appreciate the opportunity to, again, highlight some of the work that's going on in the, in the district. This is our fourth presentation, so we're going to focus on the Twelve Corners Middle School. As consistent with the last meeting, we have our architect here, David Hallmark from SEI Design. He's going to be joining me in going over the detail of the current capital projects and what's being designed, the status. And then, on behalf of Dr. Edmonds, I'll just give an update on behalf of, on behalf of Dr. Edmonds, seeing she's got the, the transition program going on. David, I'll invite you up, please.
Good evening. To start, we'll go through the work they just completed in the 2022 Capital Improvement Project. In all its glory, it was a boiler room, but it was some much-needed upgrades. We got three new boilers and controls, and that increases the efficiency for the district. One of the challenges we faced was the boilers coming in, as broken apart as they could be pre-installation, had a one-inch clearance on its sides and top to go underneath the auditorium and the accessway down in the boiler room. Because of that, we had to take out the existing stairs and chip away. And we thought, you know what? Let's think for the next 50, 60 years, when these boilers are going to fail and need replaced, and let's put removable stairs back in so that the same path could be used. And we also adjusted a new door to align with that quarter, because the other one was offset around a corner, and it allows a straight shot in for any future modernization and replacements for your equipment in there. Also, to go back, the floor was cleaned up. There was a lot of protrusions coming up through the concrete that were tripping hazards, and the facilities team had some concerns regarding their operations in there. So, we took that opportunity to clean that up and make it safer and cleaner. The 2023 Capital Improvement Project Phase 1 is currently out to bid, and that scope here has the steam suite on the third floor, taking four classrooms and gutting them, modernizing three into one for the current FACS and future steam endeavors, as well as upgrading the social studies room. There are corridor modernizations to go along with that work, stair safety modifications to prevent the tripping hazards that have occurred with the original design of these stairs from the original building, and Witten Road entry modifications to replace the storefront that has seen its better days from the salt and winters we have, and replacing the freight elevator cab. Phase 2 is currently at the State Education Department, and the scope of work for that is to take the main office and bring it down into the main lobby and to provide a secure entry with attendance right there off of the office suite. With Phase 1, the corridor modernization scope that's happening is along the corridor where the new boilers just went through on that floor. And the stairs are throughout the entire building except for up, and this would be planned north on the page, it'd be out by the tech wing, because that stair is the newest and modern code. Outside the library here, we have this corridor being modernized because there's a lot of cracking happening because of some of the additions over the years, and we're going to look to mitigate that for future concerns. And there is the third-floor FACS steam modernization in the original wing of the building. Here is a generic thought towards the furniture that can be accommodated throughout these suites. Because Family and Consumer Sciences is becoming an older program, and we're looking towards steam, the kitchen area for cooking as part of FACS is more of a modern approach with mobile furniture, mobile cooktops, and less fixed. So, that way, when the program changes, it's not expensive to renovate the classroom. It's more just furniture. Here's some perspectives for you to see. For Phase 2, with that main office relocation down in the main lobby, there noted in blue on the plan. This is the layout we're looking at for that. With this, taking the secure vessel that's already there and hardening it more with one more further stop to allow through transaction to let people identify themselves, go through your Raptor system, and be contained prior to being allowed further into the building. And during your arrival time, the door can be propped open on a hold open, and kids can come in, punch in attendance like they do, and keep moving in an effective manner. None of this will be full height, so it will not impact the skylight, and it will have a cityscape look designed to accentuate the use of your lobby as is.
So, in preparing and compiling Dr. Edmonds' thoughts, these are some of the areas that she wanted to emphasize of priority for future investment. So, when we look at the building structural systems, with the new mandate by the state maintaining certain air temperatures in there, she's advocating for air conditioning in our gymnasium. So, it's something we're going to have to look at as we're doing HVAC upgrades. Certainly, more, there's more flooring improvements that need to be done throughout the building, locker upgrades in certain areas, advocating for replacement and replacement there. And the classrooms, she highlighted four priority classrooms that have temporary walls right now, not a great learning environment. She'd like to see some investment in that classroom upgrade and modernization. Exterior doors, as you walk around the building, you can see we've, our team's tried to keep up with, with the coloring of the doors and the exterior doors. So, we need to find a longer-term solution for that with, with the door replacement. Windows, we haven't been touched in a couple of decades now. They're still in good shape, but something we're going to need to invest in over the future. More bathroom upgrades, we didn't quite get to them all in the 2017 Brighton Facilities Improvement Plan, so that's on our building condition survey. Interior fire doors also in need for some upgrade. When we look at the building design functions, redesign of the entranceway, we're actually going to look at that as part of the secure entranceway. The removal of the awning, we've tried over the years to maintain that. Still get the birds in there, you know, there's debris in there and discoloring. So, we're trying to find a longer-term solution for real inviting entrance to the, to the middle school. The auditorium has been under consideration for the last couple of projects. We still don't have a great design solution for that, so that's something we want to keep on, keep on a priority list and find the best way to utilize that, that space. Also, in the gymnasium, bleacher replacement and looking at the gym configurations. If there's a way that we can maximize programming there through investment and modernization, we saw what we were able to do with the high school, and we want to have, we want to accept a similar challenge at, at our Twelve Corners Middle School Gymnasium. So, with that, entertain any questions on behalf of Dr. Edmonds or for our architect from SEI.
I'd just make a sort of comment and a question. And I think that we've seen this in all the schools, which is, we've now compiled a really great list of completed projects. And in this case, with all the schools, we talk about behind the walls, the stuff you can't see, like boilers that actually make the school warm and cool and the things people take for granted, and then some of the other things. And, you know, we have plans back from SED, which are getting ready to go out to bid, which will be a year or two out. And then we have got plans that are in SED. It can take up to nine months to get approved before they come back, and then we line them up. So, if you're looking at work that's either been completed, is in the process of getting bid, or preparing to be approved for eight or nine years, sort of over a period of time, I think that the main office is going to be the, the office being on that first floor, doing that reconfiguration is going to be a huge visual impact on the school. But it's 2025 now. We would expect to see those changes in when, estimating. I know we haven't got approved plans back yet.
Yeah, so Phase 1 is with, is out to bid right now. So, we hope to begin some of the work in Phase 1 this summer, this upcoming summer. The design in Phase 2 is with State Education Department now, so we probably have another six to seven months, I would say, David, so we're not looking at that until probably the summer of '27.
That's great. I, you know, hats off to our, our partners at SEI, but also Lou, you and the team, and John Novelli and everybody for staying on top of the things. You know, small changes like you mentioned, David, you know, changing out stairs, so we're not doing those things again in the future. And having been in a couple of those meetings, I greatly appreciate how the people who are actually doing the work every day are being listened to and saying, "This doesn't work. Can we do something different?" So, it's Mike Conjali, John Novelli, you know, Rob Lewis, any of those folks that listen to, they've got important feedback, and you guys are doing a great job of taking that into account, which is greatly appreciated.
And we appreciate your participation on that because having the board approval real time and make those decisions, just that, real time, where we can act on them quick. So, on behalf of our OESM team, thank you to the Board of Education for allowing Larry to sit on that and, and acting in the board's interest when it comes to change orders and things like that. It's a tremendous help, and we get a lot done through those meetings with the immediate go-ahead in support of the Board of Education. So, thank you for that.
Other questions or comments from TCMS perspective? Thank you both very much. Greatly appreciated. Don't go far, Lou. Next up, we're going to get a budget review, and I know the numbers just came back today from, from the first look from the governor, Lou. So, some of those, I think, were plugged in, but let's take a first look at what we work on 12, what seems like 12 months out of the year.
Yes. Great. Thank you for that. Welcome again. So, tonight, we are going to talk about the budget, and we're going to get in a little bit more detail than where we've been over the last couple of months. As Mr. Davis said, we have the governor runs today. We still have a lot more studying to understand the impact of those runs. So, we'll be scrubbing and reconciling those numbers to our projections so we can get the best possible number to ensure that our budget is balanced with real sustaining revenue. This is the vigil we use at every budget, budget meeting, just to see and to show where we are in the process. So, right now, we've evaluated the needs, we've identified issues, and our administrative team, instructional administrative team, is designing the plans. And then, we're going to put it all together and determine our financial capabilities with the board's guidelines, you know, at the forefront. When we look at those guidelines, one of the important elements is ensuring that our expenses are matched with sustaining reoccurring revenues. You're going to see that on the revenue side of the presentation tonight, where we dipped into our fund balance and our reserves a little bit to ensure that we had stability in our program, but we also maintain a long-term financing strategy. Certainly, we're committed to our blueprint priority areas there, and as those plans are being decide, designed, excuse me, then we'll present and be transparent about what the financial implications are of those, of those plans. And then, lastly, a big part of our revenue budget is the New York State Property Tax Cap. The board has maintained a commitment to comply with that tax cap number, so we'll present the impacts of that and certainly understand what the long-term ramifications are. As far as the budget development calendar, you can see where we are and highlighted January. So, this is where we're starting to put numbers together. We don't come out with a preliminary budget because there's still so much more work to do. You think the school year just started in September, so we only have a few months that we've closed the fiscal year with, and our baseline is always our budget-to-actual projection. So, with just four months being completed, we want to take a little bit more opportunity to scrub those numbers of where we are so we have a good foundation for applying any inflationary growth. And then, certainly, the revenues are just coming out, and we'll, we'll talk through that in just a little bit. From there, we'll start to get community feedback in the community forum and go peel that next layer in, in the budget development and, and put together a preliminary budget for the executive budget proposal in March. So, here's a big picture where our budget allocations are. And I show this just to understand the magnitude of any potential decisions going forward. So, certainly, we have close to 70% is salaries and employee benefits. So, when we look at, you know, the salaries and wages, disaggregate, and I look at, look in the next couple of slides, even the next layer of where that comes from. But any decisions that are made in salary and benefits impact this portion of the benefits piece of it. So, 9% of the budget, and then there's the contractual piece of it. So, if you think about our ability to intervene and the trends in spending, you have to make decisions to do that. So, if you're making FTE decisions, that'll impact this portion of the benefits and then also the contractual benefits. But I put this together to show the magnitude of impact. So, for instance, a board of education says, "We want to cut supplies and services 10%," but that's $1.6 million. That's a huge cut, but in a $104 million budget, it's about 1% of our, 1.6% of our spending. So, I show this just to put it in perspective of where we're spending our money. We're a people-based industry, but there's a lot of other services and, and materials that are required for our academic program. So, again, disaggregating those big object classifications, we look at our salaries and wages. And you can see over the last couple of years where the board has, has invested their, their money and the community's money, mostly in teacher salaries. and the community's money, mostly in teacher salaries, as you would expect. With the infusion of federal dollars, the Board of Education made a commitment to develop a long-term financing plan to support those additional positions for mental health supports and for academic intervention services. When we're looking at the clerical and, and non-instructional staff, we, every year, we're looking at minimum wage adjustments, trying to maintain the staffing and maintain continuity of operations. Within the instructional support, we're responding to mandates, and we're adding staff appropriately to support our students that may need a little additional support, adult support. And we look at custodial operations in the rest of the areas. And again, we're looking at growth in wages and competition in the private sector. We've talked a lot about that with the growth in, in minimum wage, especially with custodial operations. So what we're looking at right now and as we're designing the plans, we're looking at those contractual increases. What's just a rollover budget going to cost us? What's the breakage opportunities? What's the increase in mandated services? What's the staffing impact for those? So that's everything that we're going through right now to scrub what the change in FTE is going to be, and then what are the cost implications from that. When we look at the enrollment projections, again, what we looked at this fall, we could see general, at the highest level, stability in our enrollment projections. But where that, those increases are impacting, you could see to try to maintain similar class sizes to what we have right now would require two, a 2.0 additional general education classrooms. And then we'd have to evaluate the impact, what, what the impact may be on special subject areas. As Dr. Rio is evaluating and partnering with our teachers, we have already identified that we're going to need additional infusion of ENL supports. So we're projecting that to be 1.5 to 2.0. I think we're, we're targeting 1.6 right now as an addition. Again, as we're looking at and evaluating student needs as going into the CSE season, you know, there may be an additional need to meet mandates with additional special education staffing. So again, Mrs. Bagnola's office is, is looking at that and understanding what the resource requirements are to give children what they need. And then certainly electives, we, our system is driven by student choice, so that has an FTE implication as well. All those will come back and, and quantify for you in, in subsequent budget presentations. When we look at the benefit allocations, again, the pie chart shows where the money is being spent. Fifty-three percent of our benefits is in health insurance. This year, our health insurance increased 14.4%. I sit on the, the board of the rash plans. We've seen an increase in high-cost claimants, the number of claims post-COVID are increasing. So this number is based on the claim volume. In addition to that, if that trend continues, we're also contending with medical inflation costs. That is estimated to be about nine percent. So if anything, we're expecting medical costs to go up about nine percent, and then we have to respond to the change in, in utilization of our healthcare services. So again, that is an impactful, but has a significant budgetary impact. And again, we've closed up all the margins, we've eaten up pretty much all the savings that we had with the change in the post-retirement over-65 health insurance. So we really need to budget current to, for our health insurance costs. When you see that, that cost for our over-65 and what we participated in regionally, changing our plans from an Exelis plan to an Aetna plan, you could see that we provided what we consider to be an extrarial greater value plan at 269% less cost than what Exelis was providing. Exelis hasn't budged, they're still continuing to rate us now at the, at the market rate. But we believe we've given our retirees a very, very high-quality plan. And because we had specific contract language, all of our movement to the Aetna plan was voluntary. So our retirees have voluntarily transferred from the Exelis plans to the Aetna plans, eighty-five percent of our retirees, just by understanding the value that they're getting and, and the cost implications in their own personal household. So that's been a huge win, and we're hoping to continue to educate our retirees and allow them to make that choice, again, which would have financial implications going forward. When we look at the TRS rate, we're still at about 10%. That's been pretty consistent, but our ERS rate is increasing 5.2% up to 16.5%. So in addition to any inflationary costs on wages, you know, from the increase in minimum wage and, you know, market pressures just competing with other industries, 16.5% of that is going to be a district contribution to the pension system. Our workers' cost allocation is also tied to payroll, and we are seeing stability in that just based on our claims history. So in our BOCs allocation, you can see the bulk of our BOCs, which is about 10% of our budget, is in special education costs. And again, that's just responding to student needs and programs that weren't, we, we do not have the capability to perform in-house, excuse me. And with that is the specialized transportation piece of it. When we look at our business and technology services, those are our shared services. Those are our cooperative ventures with other districts, and we have seen our contractual costs increase a lot, most significantly because of cybersecurity. As all the applications that we utilize are becoming compliant with ED Law 2D and are addressing and mitigating their risks, cybersecurity risk, we're seeing those costs go up much greater than a 2% inflation rate. So then you could see the rest, occupational education is a component here. We have allowed significant choice with our students, so it's a matter of our counselors working with our students and responding to the elections that our, that our students make. And that other one, 16% of our budget's services, tuitions and supplies, you can see where the greatest amount is spent in contract transportation. So we're in year two of our RFP right now. We deferred some of the increase from year one to year two. So last year it was supposed to go up 18%, we deferred 6% of it to try to smooth it out a little bit. So we're going to have another significant year of transportation increases, and then we would expect to see the, the state aid come back in, in the subsequent years. So you could see the rest are all the other mandates, utilities, and just basic operations. You could see where the budget allocations have been over the last couple of years. So with state aid and just again preliminary review of the governor's budget, you could see where, where our aid categories are, and you could see the trends over the last several years. Certainly with the commitment to fully fund foundation aid, you can see that we benefited from that commitment by the state, and we were, I think, strategic about using those increases in foundation aid to be able to afford all of the additional resources that we used with the federal dollars. So that was our financing plan to be able to continue to support the additional mental health supports, the additional academic intervention services. And then when you look to the right of that, you'll see those are the expense-based aids. So as our expenditures go up, then we'll see an increase in aid over the next couple of years. So jump to today's news with our, with our aid runs based on our projections. We see we got about a $600,000 increase in foundation aid. So that would support about a half a percent increase in spending. So it doesn't go far in that regard when you talk about percentages of a hundred and million dollar budget. And then we have increases in, you know, BOCs and excess cost aid. And again, that's more just responsive to the resource requirements over these last couple of budget years. When we get to building aid, know that we're always going to pair any changes in building aid with our debt service. That's been our commitment to the community. So we're, we're managing our capital plans to mitigate any tax impact with that. So any increases in building aid are not a necessary windfall. That was our, our goal is to stabilize a capital investment. So what we learned just in the last couple of hours about the executive budget proposal, what I did is compare and contrast what ASBO, my professional association, Association of School Business Officials, were advocating for, and then what was actually made it to the executive budget proposal. So one of the, the nice things that we have been advocating for locally is the universal school meals. So we'll have to understand what that means, but hopefully that's a tremendous benefit for our community that the governor has allocated additional funds for. What we need to learn more about, and certainly I would defer to the superintendent to talk to, is the distraction-free schools and what those regulations will be, if they do have any financial implications, if they require infrastructure, you know, that's yet to be determined. But then the foundation aid formula, some of the key points that were summarized by School Boards Association and ASBO, just give an overview of, of that. So the changes from the baseline formulas to the Rockefeller Institute recommendations, that's where I'll be doing some work and understanding of how those changes in percentages impacted our particular runs. So basically, we've got just under a 3% increase in foundation aid, although our needs index have increased. So for them to select the 2,000 poverty data, I don't think has benefited us because we've had significant, I showed that in the, in the fall presentation showing our extraordinary needs index. Our free and reduced lunch percentages have increased. But then selecting the 2,000 data, hopefully there's room for negotiations in the budget process that could make, hopefully look at more current data and then be more reflective of where we are today in, in 2024. So when I put all the numbers together, again, preliminary, we'll see some increases here in the amount of spending that it supports. So overall, the revenue picture as of today would support a 2.21% increase in, in spending. So we have a lot of work to do, again, to reconcile budget to actual, and then to really understand the intricacies of this, the governor's budget and any additional revenue opportunities there. We're going to need to look at the financing strategies, again, our use of reserves for continuity of program. And those are all discussions that we'll be having over, over the next month and a half or so. So our next steps, again, monitoring the budget to actual for analyze the assumptions used, collaborate with our building principals, understand their staffing needs, make sure we have the right FTE allocations. Historically, we have done a community thought exchange. I expect we will be doing that again to get feedback from our community and then making any adjustments in, in response to that. And then always continuing our advocacy for funding and mandate relief. So much of what we do is mandate-driven, any flexibility in that, you know, may create some, or may alleviate some support. Let us, let us be flexible on how we deliver it, maybe it would help in some ways. But again, those are all conversations that are had by all districts in the Albany area, so. Dr. McGowan, anything you'd want to add in that regard?
No, I think, one, it's important to point out to everybody that this is the beginning of the budget process relative to the executive proposal, which now the legislature will debate, react to, and eventually put out their one-house proposals as well. We're relatively encouraged by the idea that it usually doesn't go down from here, and the number is not horrendous. We have our own structural challenges within the budget, so this is not also a large ask that we're, you know, jumping up and down excited about. We clearly feel the need for additional funding to meet our needs, but to be realistic, we're, we're not in a bad place. We're not in, again, some great celebratory place, but we feel like we have a starting point to work from. And in terms of the other initiatives that Lou mentioned, the free and reduced lunch for all students or free lunch for all students and breakfast, we think is a great step forward. We're in favor and supportive of a change in the approach to cell phones statewide, and we'll monitor that. We feel like we're actually probably pretty close to what the governor would be looking for in any case. And we'll depend on the State Department to fulfill their statutory responsibility in that regard as well. But we think we're starting in, in a, in a good spot. And as Lou mentioned, we'll be going out and asking the community for their perspective and working through the process now over the next couple of months. Thank you.
I just, I did one, we have a, and I'm going to probably ask Karen Hatch just to say something from a legislative advocacy standpoint, but there is a community forum on February 25th at seven o'clock with people, and that's for all feedback, not just budget. Then we'll of course have some budget community forums as well, leading up those dates to be determined in addition to what we do with the thought exchange. So we always solicit feedback, and we usually get some pretty good feedback from folks in terms of what's most dear to them and what they really want to make sure, you know, helps keep us bright. Karen, you're co-chair for Monroe County School Board Association's Legislative Committee. We've got a session upcoming with some elected leaders, you want to talk about that for a minute?
Sure, on February 1st, Monroe County School Board Association holds really its flagship event, it's the Legislative Breakfast, all school board members, administrators, many superintendents and business officials who attend. We have our legislators face-to-face, our elected officials will be there with us. We'll have opportunities to ask them questions about what the budget looks like, what our priorities are. We are thrilled to see universal meals be a function of the governor's proposal because that's been a legislative priority for Monroe County School Boards Association for two to three years now since the pandemic. So if we can cross that off our list, then we can go ahead and advocate for all of the other pieces on our list. But several members will be in attendance. Mr. Alamo, Dr. McGowan will both be there at the Legislative Breakfast, and we'll have opportunities to talk about how, how this budget proposal would affect our ability to function.
And advocate obviously for our community with some of our elected leaders or some of their aides in some cases.
We are very lucky in Monroe County that we really do, we're very different, we have very different school districts, but for the most part, our legislative priorities are the same. And we're, because we're able to work with greater numbers, I feel like our message gets delivered to more folks. That's a good thing.
Thank you, and for your work on that committee. Any other questions or comments from Lou? Thank you, Lou, very much, appreciate it. Next up for the consent agenda, we've got approval of personnel changes. And one of the best things about being in Brighton is all of our fundraising asks us to eat.
Do we have bids first?
Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped over bids, thank you very much. We have three bids here, cooperative bid for medical trainer, cooperative bid for health and safety, and cooperative bid for custodial supplies. These are all us banding together with the other school districts through BOCs to get the best possible prices. Questions in regards to any of these bids? Motion to approve the three cooperative bids listed here.
So move?
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Esther?
Moved by Sue.
Moved by Sue, seconded by Esther, all those in favor?
Aye.
You guys are too far away.
We are too far away.
Sorry about that. Now we'll go to the consent agenda, thank you Karen. As I was saying, great to ask our community to eat on behalf of our kids and the things they do. We've got four or five different opportunities here. Everything from the Red Cross Club to the Class of 2026, the Class 2026 Student Council, all listed here on the agenda. Field trip approvals, you know, just amazing, some of the things we're doing. The high school trip to Renne, France in February, the TCMS Global Citizenship Mission Trip in February, and the DECA Business Club to Syracuse. Finally, gifts, and is, as is our practice, we'll read each of these gifts. We have, as always, an amazing list of generosity here. First, a gift from the Brighton Education Fund in the amount of $4,125 to Audrey DiMatteo to furnish a designated sensory calming room within Council Rock. A gift from the Brighton Education Fund in the amount of $1,225 to Zachary Koch to pay for transportation for the entire second grade to visit the Memorial Art Gallery. This coming year, admission is free, so this cost is to cover transportation. A gift from the Brighton Education Fund, the amount of $900 to Twelve Corners Middle School to actualize a project initiated by the Culture and Climate Committee to create a more inclusive atmosphere in the school. This will pay for printing and frames for photographs of students that reflect the diversity of the student body and will be displayed throughout the school. A gift from Robin Brent, BHS Class of 74, to the BHS Photo Club in the amount of $300, which will enable BHS students a way to explore visual art via photography. A gift from Jeffrey Kreen, BHS Class of 1974, to the BHS Photo Club in the amount of $100, which will enable BHS students a means to explore visual art via photography. And finally, a gift from Robin Brent, BHS Class of 74, to the PTSA Support Fund at Brighton High School in the amount of $3,000. I am constantly amazed, as I know the entire board is, at the generosity of our community alumni and friends. Any questions with regards to the consent agenda? Motion to approve. Moved by Alder.
Second.
Seconded by Karen, all those in favor? Any other comments, Dr. McGowan, for the good of the order?
I'm going to make one, in case anybody's paying attention. I joke about tomorrow and the weather, but I've sent all of you a message you should take a look at. But I would just say to the community in all seriousness, the Monroe County Health Department does communicate with us pretty clearly on recommended guidance. Recommended, the state head department, the health department do not mandate school closure in any form unless there's a state of emergency, things like that, reasons why roads are not passable. But in most cases, that's left up to individual districts. And the community will see individual districts make different decisions in this regard. But the guidance does say very clearly, so it's not a mystery, that it is a minus 25 wind chill when frostbite is an issue for those outside after 30 minutes, which would be beyond when our kids should be outside. And we recommend people take a look at that guidance, but also make decisions that make the most sense for their family. But it doesn't, in and of itself, right now, that temperature allow us to school, to close school. And we, we should be open, and we should be supportive of the experience that our kids get every day and everything that goes into that whenever we possibly can. Every district makes their own decision based on a lot of different factors. And the minus 25 is not an absolute, because if there are other factors, additional snow, difficulty in the roads, other issues, the decision is made considering a lot of different factors. But as of right now, it is anticipated, the National Weather Service, in Brighton, we will reach a wind chill of minus 15 at our peak transportation time, which is 10 degrees off of where we would be. So I just want to make it clear, even though people will see different announcements from different districts, that it makes the most sense and is safe for our kids to be in school, which is what our which is what our duty is, is to have school. And, and that's not, not to criticize anybody else, that's our choice and other people make different choices for a lot of other reasons. So just want to make that clear while we have the opportunity to make an announcement.
We want to thank the tech team, which includes Joy and Bill and Mike, who we walked in, the tables are set up, everything is taken care of, we're appreciative of that. We didn't get to see Danielle tonight because she's hosting a transition event, can you just say something about that real quick?
I believe it's the fifth, five-go-six transition that's here in this building and wanting to meet fifth graders and their families coming up next year, but orienting them to the program here at TCMS before next year.
So on the more mundane level, we're thankful for Danielle for hosting us tonight, we didn't get to see her, but she was at a more important function from that standpoint. We did get to hear about the school. As always, we also thank Dan and Kim for all the work they did so we could, as we always do, walk in, everything's working and we can start the meeting, so we're appreciative of everybody's efforts in that regard. With that, is there anything else from the board before I ask for a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Carrie Lynn, all those in favor? We are adjourned.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.